I'm gonna pass them out now, so don't interrupt the meeting when it's time. Thank you. What about your folder backs? Say that in contact, sorry.
I'm losing my voice.
Alright folks, it's seven thirty. If we're all rise please, we'll call this meeting in order and this is the special allegiance.
I feel like the words to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republican Party for gracious hands, for the nation, under God, in this whole liberty of the House.
Alright, roll call please. Trustee Hop?
Here.
Trustee Canelli?
Here.
Trustee Thomas?
Here.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Trustee Diatley?
Here.
Trustee Schatzberger? She is on the way tonight, thank you. Uh, do, do I have a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes from August eighteenth, twenty twenty five?
So moved.
Second. Moved by, is that Canelli?
Yes, sir.
Canelli, seconded by Thomas, thank you. Any comments, questions, or edits for the minutes? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No opposition, all in agreement, motion passes, thank you. And we are moving on to the president report. I've asked trustee Thomas to read the civility pledge tonight.
In the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective.
Alright, so, um, we all just received the Sleepy Hollow Legend Newsletter for reviewing and proofing. I noted on there on the calendar that they have given us an example of the burn open date. Uh, last year it was set for September twentieth on the legend, they've indicated it for October first. We did not get it on the agenda for this week. We have until, we have until next week to do so, or next meeting to do so. Um, but just wanted to put that on your minds as to when we'd like to open up for the burn pile, want to stick with October first, that would be convenient. And then they won't have to make any edits, but if they wanted to change it, maybe we could discuss that tonight. And then make the vote for the next meeting, but that way we can have the corresponding date on the legend tonight. Uh, I will address that again in a minute, we just go through the rest of the items. Um, farmer's market, this is the last market in the hollow coming up this weekend. It was originally set for September fourteenth, but since West Dundee will be hosting their heritage fest that weekend, uh, Christine Fuqua and the rest of the crew have decided to push it to this weekend, so there's this Sunday, September seventh, from ten until one at Sabatino Park. It's the last one of the season of our inaugural season, I hope to see everybody there. We had a wonderful time, uh, we also were able to get our food truck licensing through, and I understand that Damos Barbecue has put in a request for a license and will hopefully be at the market on Sunday, so that'll be our first food truck in a public area here in the village. Which brings me to another fun item, um, lots of people were buzzing on Facebook this weekend of the dulcet sounds of the ice cream truck running through the village. I will admit, technically the ringing of the bell did violate our recent license and it was traveling through the village. I never witnessed it myself, I just heard the sound. So I couldn't report the violation, but I also understood from a lot of people that they enjoyed hearing the ice cream truck go through town, so. I bring this up just to say we are doing a pilot program this summer with this food truck licensing. We nixed having any noises, we also said we didn't want vehicles moving around. This just kind of reminisce on this past weekend, consider the experiences some of the kids have, is that something we want to reconsider when we come up with more formal ordinance, uh, after this summer session, so. Uh, additionally, trustee Schatzberger, who's not here tonight, she and I met last Monday with workers from the Dundee Township Open Spaces. Individuals who I've worked with quite a bit over the past year and have been instrumental in creating open spaces and green spaces here in the Dundee Township. We are trying to coordinate an invasive clearing with Dundee Township Open Space employees, so it'd be on a workday, it'd be in the beginning of October, we're thinking. Uh, we'll make an announcement once we get that solidified, but we will be working on the public spaces first. Sleepy Hollow will be thoroughbred down to, um, well, down to where it divides on its way to Hickory Hollow on the east side of Sleepy Hollow Road, and then from there beyond down to Bonkowski with the Dundee Township side. Uh, we'll be aiming to do a week, a weekday workday as well as a weekend workday. Ideally, our goal is to be every week in the month of October, because there's a lot that needs to be cleared out. Uh, but we'll also see how many volunteers we can get and how efficient we can be. Uh, we are also coordinating with Kyle and public workspace, so they will be able to help us move some of the stuff to the burn pile. And then we have qualified people on the Dundee Township area that will be helping with burning in their side. Please, we'll put, we'll update you in the next meeting as to those dates. Uh, neighbors night out, the Sleepy Hollow Legend editors, Sam Parker and Kathy Eaton have graciously, uh, set up a neighbors night out at the assembly, this will be Saturday, September thirteenth at seven P M. It is, everybody, you pay for your own weight, you just need to make reservations, you'll pay for your own food and beverage, and there's kind of a, a specific menu for our group that you can choose from, just so you know, they have an idea of a head count and boot count. I hope to see lots of people there, tickets are limited at fifty, so please go online, it's on Facebook, it's on all of the sites, uh, just register and we'll see you there. Uh, let's see. There have been some inquiries, uh, with respect to agenda packets. Public hearings with respect to, or requests about the self-service storage units and with respect to the RFPs of the building department vacancy. Again, I ask people to not make assumption, assumptions on information that you do not possess. We have set an agenda, uh, we've set an agenda to get these done. We have just put out, we've just started publishing agenda packets after this last meeting. After each meeting, Eugene goes on and publishes the warrants after we've approved them in the, in the meeting. He has subsequently now started posting our agenda packets. There are limitations and restrictions as to what we can publish and post on the village website, whatever we decide to do now sets the standard and the precedent for any administration moving forward. I know how much time and effort I want to put into it, which is a lot, but I can't necessarily say that the next administration, all of whom are also volunteers, will be able to put in that much effort as well. And we need to consider our FOIA requests, OMA FOIA requirements as well as OMA requirements. And I'm trying to keep my voice steady, but honestly, I'm really angry and infuriated that honestly, Deb Vernon, that on Facebook today, when you posted the agenda, that you had the audacity to say that you're working on the administration to get the agenda packets out, published out early. I have not seen you in any meeting where we've discussed it. I've been meeting with Eugene Love, or Eugene Levy, sorry, Eugene with Mark, with the clerk, with various trustees, with the chief, we've been doing our open meetings act certification, checking the criteria necessary for that for Freedom of Information Act, and I haven't seen any research or any contributions from you aside from FOIA, FOIA-ing us endlessly and complaining that agenda packets have not been produced. So if you would like to work on it, we can certainly use help here, but please don't claim to be doing something that you're not. That is what I'm doing, I'm working on it. Thank you. As for the RFPs with respect to the building department vacancy. RFPs are required if we're going out for private industries to contract with, we are not working on that, that is why there are no RFPs. Again, these are matters that the administrator and I are working on, we bring to the board and we will address it when it is timely and ready to do so. We had a timeline, but it got pushed up early because unfortunately Barb Detmer, our building official, was pressured into resigning early. We had a plan in place to work on this, we have since actually regrouped, gotten something in place, and we will be setting a special meeting because it can't be solidified until after our fifteenth meeting, but I will ask the board of trustees to set up a special business meeting for the week of the fifteenth so we can improve an intergovernmental agreement to cover our vacant building, uh, departments. Lastly, with respect to sixteen one West Main and self-storage, self-service storage units. We have scheduled a public hearing for September ninth in which I'm asking the board to make a text amendment to section eight, five dash one in the zoning regulation to omit self, self, self-service storage units from the ordinance, from the, yes, from the ordinance. So we are addressing these things. I'm sorry we're not updating you individually on these matters, but we cannot disclose that but for a public forum, that is what we've been elected to do, that is what we're doing. If you want, you can come into office hours and speak to me and ask questions, but uh, yeah, that's where we are. So, as for the board, um, I would like to put this to, at, open up for a little bit of discussion to ask you about opening up the bonfire dates as well as availability for a special business meeting after September sixteenth, which is a Tuesday. Ideally, we'd have it that Wednesday or Thursday. Uh, the last one we had all availability, I think it was a Friday afternoon or evening. Can I have a show of hands as to who would be available on a Wednesday evening? It'd be Wednesday the seventeenth.
Is it possible that I can participate via, uh, virtually?
We would need to have a physical forum.
Well, if you qualify.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. I will qualify.
Oh, okay. I have. Trustee Diatley? You are?
Yes.
Thank you. And what time? Uh, well, that's, that would be the next question, one's some dates first. Okay, so take less.
Well, somebody's gotta go first.
That's what I'm saying, so we could have proved it, if we could be accurate from them, we could have created it on even, and then they can do the ability, even the suspect, right?
I guess it depends on the special. With the, uh, with the other one.
Let's get a special business meeting, at least a date set, but we can have it if we need it. Uh, just because of the timeframe and making sure that we have it, things in place before October fourth. I have a small district meeting. Okay, Thursday, folks, Thursday. What is it, seventeenth, eighteenth, thank you. Anybody who cannot meet Thursday the eighteenth that evening?
Same answer.
Oh. Why can't you meet, you're with the most programs?
Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
Okay, we can meet back to that, so. Sign of the executive board, the second of session. Alright, uh, looks like we have Thursday the eighteenth, any objections from people if we have?
I won't be.
You will not be, trustee Canelli will still also be.
I will virtually.
So put us down.
Should I be working?
Hmm?
Is it, is it too much to push out a week?
To the twenty first or the twenty second? I don't.
On the Monday, like, like the regular.
We could do the twenty second, we could do the twenty second.
So, hang on though, so we got a meeting the fifteenth, we can't take care of it on the fifteenth?
We're gonna see if we can, but approval from the other governmental institution won't come until later that week. So we just need to find out where we are in the approval process. Um, but the twenty second, and if we can do it on the fifteenth, we will, we can cancel this one, I just wanted to get it on the books while we're all here. So we're not trying to get to you last second. So, no objections to the twenty second?
Seven thirty?
Seven thirty? Can anybody not attend Bill and Mill, we both in theory be that?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so we'll have a tentative special business, special board meeting on Monday the twenty second at seven thirty. That will be for the approval of an I G A. Uh, also for discussion is the burn pile, who can, Kyle, do you have any objection October first, is there a date that you prefer?
Uh, no, it doesn't, doesn't make a difference to me, I think usually in the past, we, it would be a Friday, but if it's a Wednesday, doesn't matter. We can open the gates first thing in the morning.
Anybody else? Last year it was September twentieth, this will give us three weeks, three weeks plus a couple days. If it's October first, as it is printed. Alright?
Of course.
Alright, I will let them know that that edit is fine with the legend, and we will go down that at the next meeting. And then. Hang on a second. Alright, we are moving on to the clerk report, please.
Uh, number four.
Thank you.
Can I say something? For my student, because it has nothing to do with zoning. I just want to, um, call out in a good way, Officer Diori and Cordova. Um, they were involved with a resident issue that I got called into as a resident and a friend, and I just want to say thank you from myself and from the residents how you both handled that situation. Um, you were very calming for that resident, you answered the questions the way I wanted to see them answered, you answered questions that I had because I was not aware of certain things with the situation. You were there lickety-split. Uh, you guys came back and checked on us, and I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart because they, um, these residents are very thankful and have spoken very highly of how you both handled that, and I'm so grateful that Chief Parma has you both on this department, and we as residents and as a board should count ourselves very lucky to have them because of the way they handled themselves in the whole situation, so thank you very much for that, I wanted to give a shout out to both of you.
Maybe trustee's moments. Uh, planning and zoning work?
Uh, there'll be two public hearings next Monday, first will be on, uh, variance request for a deck that will be, um, they're asking for penetrations into the side yard setback. The Nod shaped lot with the, uh, house was constructed in violation of the required setbacks in the first place. And then, as you previously mentioned, the test, and then it will be the second something.
What is that?
That'll be Monday the eighth, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's Monday.
I think, I think you said the ninth.
Oh.
It's the eighth.
It's eighth, yes, Monday the eighth.
At what time?
It's thirty.
I went seven days ahead of the second, sorry. And what was the second item? It's the next event for self storage units. Can you do, because that was my thing, was taking game. Well, attorney's report?
I have no report at this time, there are several agenda items below under new business.
Uh, engineer report?
Uh, a couple items, first you'll see, uh, some of the construction signing has gone out today, and they are going to be removing the asphalt for the streets on street program on Friday and then paving on Thursday. Uh, I'll let you know schedule changes due to weather or anything like that. Uh, secondly is in the board package. Uh, you'll see the precast, uh, concrete structure for the, uh, thoroughbred, uh, lane. You'll see it is the Constan O series. Uh, just give you an update on scheduling wise, is talking to Kyle and Eugene, and also the manufacturer is, it's looking like it's going to be in the spring and that's going to be installed. Uh, in the meantime, it's a lot bid and had everything all set, made for, and, uh, surprising curves. Questions?
Thank you.
Is it?
Uh, director of finance report, please.
Request approval of the accounts payable in amount of one hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Do I have a motion, so?
Second.
Move final wires, seconded by Thomas to approve accounts payable in amount of one hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-seven cents. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, uh, roll call vote please.
Trustee Diatley?
Aye.
Trustee Canelli?
Aye.
Trustee Hop?
Aye.
Trustee Thomas?
Aye.
Trustee McGuire?
Aye.
All in favor, no opposed, motion passes. Anything, anything else for Eugene?
No, that's it.
Uh, Melissa or Barb, could you get the? Alright, Mr. Vernon, you're up first, please.
Thank you. Now, thank you for your remarks earlier, you did actually a little bit of. Alright, you know, going back to August fourth, motion was made, signed it, and voted in affirmative for, by the board. The village administrator furnished a draft, uh, the regarding the, uh, building and zoning. Uh, it was supposed to be ready so that it could be discussed at the A V T meeting, there was no draft at that meeting. There was no mention of it in remarks or reports. I've provided just a quick draft R F P that could be utilized if your discussion rolling, you're up, that center. It didn't take four weeks to generate, it didn't take four days to generate. Falling down here. Just falling down, can't happen. There's too much riding. Want to point out in the strongest possible terms, the roles of the building official in the zoning office. I want to point out in the strongest possible terms, the roles of the building official in the zoning officer. The first line of defense of public life safety. There's only an officer scrutinizes possible uses for property that could present unacceptable risk or hazard to the residents as well as nuisance. Building officially must ensure that at least minimum levels of safety required by our adopted codes are strictly adhered to. And remember that the adopted codes are the minimal standard of safety. When you're talking structure, fire. You wouldn't hire a carpenter if you didn't own his own hammer, much less a carpenter who didn't have a used one. So in the same manner, we reasonably expect candidates for these roles to demonstrate a wide breadth of knowledge and significant depth of experience in these functions. I expect my remarks this evening have irritated a few people. I'll tell you right now, I much prefer seeing appraisers with the uh of the the people on the board and the staff that that work hard every day. Make this village succeed. The president in the last meeting, when I questioned about committees. Why they haven't happened yet, he said, we need many more people before they can start work. Well, how many is many more? Are you worried that a newcomer might not be able to get up to speed in a timely manner if committees were to start meeting? At that point, I'm reminded that in 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 about eighteen sixty-one, eighteen sixty-two, Abraham Lincoln fired George McClellan from head of the Grand Army of the Republic because he spent most of his time preparing, get more troops, get more supplied instead of actually conducting battles. The longer we take to get things moving. The the harder it's gonna be to make the necessary corrections and adjustments.
Next, we have Mrs. Vernon.
Hi, that'd be Vernon, eight twenty-one Locust Drive, twenty-three year old, or twenty-three year residence. Um, I'm changing my report a little bit. Um, I just wanted to be clear, what I had written was that um. And maybe it was the wording, but I just said, I was working on trying to get administration to post these packets before the board, you need to be transparent with residents. Perhaps I should have stated that a little bit differently. I did have a communication with Jennifer Ree over a messenger. And she was so great, she did send us the agenda and I thanked her for it and I was asking about this. Um, I did get a FOIA um, for the packets. Um, and I don't know if they were on before I did it or afterwards, but that was great. I got that information and I appreciate that. So maybe I should have done that perhaps a different way. Um, and I'm glad to see that that is going to be soon. And I don't understand, I didn't see any redactions on the foils for the packets that I did receive. So there was nothing crossed out, so I would assume that nothing had to be redacted for FOIA or for other OMA um things. So I found that interesting. Um, so anyway, um. So, and then I don't feel that my FOIA requests are numerous or cumbersome. Um, I think they've been pretty simple, they've been just PDFs and Eugene was um very informative and said that two of them were on the website, was not aware of that, so that was great. So it was, in my opinion, not a lot of numerous not voiding every week. And that is a right of any village resident to put in a FOIA for your information act. Um. I'm glad to hear that um, the um. Self-storage is going to go in front of the Plan Commission on nine eight for a um prohibited use, I believe it would be, I don't, wasn't the exact thing, but that means none as as far as I understand that. So that's good. Um, the proposal for the building official, I don't know if I understood correctly, but was the meeting that's gonna be held nine twenty-two, twenty-five for an interim governmental agreement. I don't know if you can answer that. So that's the, that's the way we're going in a, I would be a a county or a um other municipality, I would assume. Um, so that's um probably somebody local, which is good. Um, I think the only other thing I had is that um. I did notice that there was some, um, I don't know if you have an idea of when you might appoint more committee members in the community.
As I've stated this entire time, when we have enough members to fulfill a committee, be to fulfill a open meetings act, I will start a committee.
Okay, and that's not holding many business up necessarily.
We can't, we can't create a committee unless we have the right number of people for an open meetings act. If you'd like to go back and listen to prior meetings, I've explained it on a couple of times now. I'd also be happy to meet with you guys during a meeting here during my office.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, and I may.
Nothing has changed.
Yeah, being uh running for somebody who's interested and I'll make sure that they see you yourself and Jennifer and they can have a conversation with you. So, that's great. Um, I think that was it. And I know we're on a rough rough thing going on now, but you know, I'm still gonna live here, I'm still gonna participate. Um, I will reach out to you. Um, you know, if needed, but you know, it was just frustrating that with the permitting that nothing was done, nothing was even said on the meeting, that we're considering going a different way. Didn't have to see what you were doing, but for the building official, you know. That was, I think, it was just not known and not even commented that we're taking a step back, we need a little bit more time. So that probably would have changed some of my comments. So, um. That's it, thank you, and I appreciate everything that all the trustees and the village president is doing here. Thank you.
Alright, we're moving on to trustee reports. Roads, parks and streets, please.
Okay, thanks. Um, if you're coming off of Saddle Club, you probably realize that we've had a a bit of an issue as we uh started working on a culvert on the south side of the road and then realized that the culvert going underneath the road was in extremely bad condition. Um, even Flex Seal wouldn't fix it, so it would actually be torn up. And uh, with knowing that that street's gonna be repaved as part of our street program, uh, now is the time to do that. So it took a couple of days, but it was the the right decision to get that taken care of. Um, as far as the street program, um. I believe that Jeff and I are gonna hand out flares to them on doors to make residents aware of the upcoming uh street repair. Um, and I'm assuming that we could probably put something onto the website as well. So that the presidents are aware of that. Had a meeting with the Schroder, the contractor, as well as Jeff, Kyle, just to review all the requirements of the street program from a safety standpoint, from um making sure that we're all on the same page, where we're gonna be getting the work is on on Willow, uh, kinda like down there, the kinder care, cause that probably is the the busiest street and probably one of the the longest runs. Um. I also in the past have talked about the an extension of this uh bike path between West Dundee and Sleepy Hollow. I've met with the uh resident that lives at the corner. He's willing to possibly donate a piece of that land from his property so that we could get that completed. And I've had conversations with Wes Dundee about the cost. They would have to incur in order to make it uh ADA accessible, which is a requirement. Um, if to complete that bike path. That is it for roads. Um. And there's gonna be some work done to, well, I think we're gonna have to vote on it as far as the uh work to be done at Seventino with the border and uh ADA mulch. So, that is it.
Thank you. Um. Trustee Hall? Uh, finance report?
Um. No official report, just continuing to work uh with Jeff. And we met with a resident earlier tonight to discuss water main replacements in the village. More to come as we get our arms around it. Big project.
Thank you, that was a really good effective meeting. Um. Trustee McGuire, water and sewer?
No official report, uh Eugene, I need to set them. Time, I think, next week to talk to you and spent a lot of time talking to residents in the last week and trying to understand some of their water bills and stuff like that, so it just rather to help them figure it out. I was at a couple doors last weekend, so. Um, I'll, 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 I'll contact you tomorrow where you figure it out. Sorry, but no, no official report after that.
Also, uh, Wendy O'Neil is also a great resource for being able to explain through the water bills.
Cool, yeah, thank you.
Uh, trustee Diatley, police and public safety.
Uh, you'll notice chief report is in your uh packet, I hope you read it. Um, one thing that is of great concern with us and police and public safety is every year we have a vast turnover of officers. Um, it's the situation we've been in for many, many years. Um, part of that is um Officer DeJesus has uh tendered his resignation, he will be leaving us for another agency. Uh, the chief and I are going to be meeting within the next couple of weeks, uh. Again, to brainstorm on ideas. Uh, the biggest thing we find is we do not offer a pension and we do not offer a salary near what others are paid. And it is, there is a big difference. Um, so that's one of the reasons we continue to lose a lot of employees uh to that aspect. Uh, the chief has done a great job of keeping that pipeline going. Um, in fact, he has several candidates he will be presenting uh within the next couple of meetings. But we need to brainstorm and figure out how we can do something different. Um, think out of the box, think in the box. Anywhere around the box. Um, but we have to come up with something to stop this from happening because we're just training officers, then we lose them and they're good officers. And you can't blame them when they're going for a pension and they're making a lot more money somewhere else. So it's a very big concern, it's a concern we've had for many years. Used to be that part-time officers would fill this void. Um, there is not the same pool of part-time officers anymore. Um, the chief and I have talked about this and it seems that when people are retiring now they're not gonna work part-time anymore. So that's one of the problems we have as well. Um, so I'm open to ideas. If anybody has ideas to share, certainly reach out to me. Uh, we're gonna, like I said, we're gonna be meeting and you'll have more to come on this in the next few meetings coming forward. But uh, a big concern.
Can I ask the question, what do you, can you, off the top of your head, do you know what the other towns are paying where we are in the ration today besides not having a pension?
Um, the last officer that I know of, um, his salary was, he was offered a pension and his salary was, don't quote me on this, but fifteen to seventeen thousand dollars more than he paid.
So does that mean raising our taxes?
Well, I guess it's, I'm just curious.
That's one of the things that I think, I'll be honest.
This, this is a good thing to raise up. Um, we had a, so trustee Hoff, Eugene and I met with a resident earlier today to discuss the water main replacement and other water projects. Um, one of the things that I'm working with with trustee Hoff is finding some of these big projects that we have in different departments. And we wanna replace the Hill Crest and Winmore water mains. What's that gonna cost? What are ways to finance it? What are the steps we need to take? How can we do it without charging the residents as much? Um, and actually with what trustee Diatley was just saying, I was thinking, you know, eighteen thousand dollars per officer, we have, we want eight full-time officers. A hundred and forty-four thousand dollars plus pensions. That's another large project. He's already got his calculator out. So this is, this is why I wanted trustee Hoff on finance. Um, what I'd like to ask all of the trustees now, as we are in September, we've got about four, three months left in the year. Five months until February, when we start working on the budget and appropriations is roads and parks with respect to street repairs. We have limitations on what certain funds can go to street repairs. Let's take a look at the next ones that are coming up, get an idea of how much that might cost. While we're looking at this two years down the road, or can it be feasible next year? And let's take it to trustee Hoff and start running some of the numbers. Uh, Diatley, let's start figuring out the numbers of what chief wants and start figuring that out five months in advance and see where we can, I mean, I know we're not gonna pull it out of thin air, but let's also look at our financing options and
because I don't.
Do we need to bring taxes or what?
Well. I know that um, it's been brought up and people have mentioned not only in this room, but outside, I've talked to other residents, you know, oh, let's unincorporate. That's not the answer because I know people that have lived in unincorporated areas. And to get the police there or county or whomever. It, you know, we could, the police could be by us in a minute or backed up by West Dundee or East Dundee, which they have backed us up. But um, when it comes to being unincorporated in Ham County it's when they get there. They could be clear across the other side of the county. Well, I, if I'm in trouble I'm not, I don't wanna wait for county police. So if you bring up, this is what we need to raise our taxes for water mains, for the police department, for a pension. I'll go knock on doors because I am all about the safety of these residents here.
So how many full-time officers would we need if we had?
I'd like to have a slate of eight.
Plus the chief.
Yes, plus the chief.
Have we ever had eight?
Um, yes, at one time, I believe we have.
For short period.
For a short period and then it, yeah, it varies.
And how many do we have now that we've lost this?
Um, right now, we are down to four officers full-time. And we are filling in with um part-time right now. That's why chief has several more coming before. He's in background checks with with two others right now and one, another one he's starting. So he's in background checks with three people right now.
And are we talking a base salary or an hourly? So many times.
Um, a base salary. Base salary, yeah. You need a voucher. Yeah. I think that, you know, we all lose track of the fact that nobody wants to pay more money. We all get that. But things have gone up. You go to your Starbucks, your five dollar Starbucks is now seven. That's gone up tremendously in the last three years. Well, the village expenses have gone up in the last three years. And we're still squeezing every penny and every nickel out of every dollar we can. Um, trust me, there's not any expenditure.
A lot of households are also doing that.
I get it, I get it.
I mean. But then they shouldn't be complaining about not having. I get what you're saying. Uh, you know, we, we're squeezing, everybody's squeezing. But.
It's also.
I understand that, but then they come back and they complain about our police, we don't have enough police officers. Well, shame on us. Because we won't we won't pay our officers, so we're losing them.
Get rid of the, the license plate cameras, there's two salaries right there increase. You can cut back too.
You wanna get up that, that safety level? I don't.
I don't either.
We got the, the.
I don't need.
Getting rid of the cameras will only be eighteen thousand dollars a year, which will just be one salary.
Okay, the one salary.
I'm sorry, the increase of the difference between.
I don't, I don't agree with getting rid of those. I, I don't agree with it because that's.
Cut back, so does the village have to cut back at certain times. I'd like to have my.
Jennifer, you've been on this board, you know, we, we get, we scrunch every penny, every nickel we can find.
Last year, the tax, the property taxes went up five percent, but it also went up five percent with the schools, the libraries, E C C. The fire. Then, but we can't just continue to raise it five percent or even five percent is gonna be more or three percent. But we're talking, we're talking a referendum, I guess, at this point.
I, I think we're.
No, we were just discussing, we're looking into the options over the next four to five months before appropriations to then figure out, okay. We don't wanna do a referendum, but we're looking at water mains, figure out are there other ways to maneuver this? Let's, and we're this is the start of the discussion, but let's not panic and start a dumpster fire with this.
But I think that I understand what Jennifer is saying that you know, everybody's getting hit in the pocket. I get it. You know, we all are, everybody's sitting at this table, everybody. And every resident out there, not only in Sleepy Hollow but in West Dundee, East Dundee, Gilbert, everywhere.
It's across America.
Yes, it's everywhere. What I am upset about is that we get residents complaining about safety. And we won't take the appropriate actions to make it safer by paying our officers more to keep them, by giving them a pension like almost every other town. And how, how can you do that? Like, I just think that's wrong. You know, and maybe.
Then the, 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 if we do raise it, then we have to like say what it's allotted to.
Right, which I've said before, you know, you're gonna raise taxes. Okay, here, I'm a visual person. So I wanna know, here's my, your, if you have this house, if this, I've discussed it with several of you. This house is the cost of my house, this is what my taxes are gonna go up. And put it, line I'd have a public meeting and say. And put it, line, I'd have a public meeting and say, here, and here's why. Instead of just saying, we're gonna put this out there, we need to be, you know, as, as you've all said. Let's be transparent. Well, that's being transparent is explaining to these residents why we wanna raise our taxes. For the officers, so we can get good officers, just like the ones sitting over there. So we can keep our chief, just like the one in that office. Uh, you know, let's rate, let's explain it as to why, because I think if we did explain it. I don't think you'd have an issue with.
Well, I think a good thing is that, as you've offered, let's all figure this out. It doesn't have to resolve today, but we've got a few months to try to figure it out.
Right.
And look at departments by department and see what can be done.
Right.
It's gonna be a tough hill to climb, but I, I, I think if we're even talking about taxes.
I have faith, Eugene. But you have the background.
I've been looking at the tax levy for, that we're gonna be discussing probably next month. So last year we had a three-point-four percent increase.
That's a huge.
This year, this year, the increase is only gonna be two-point-nine percent. So it's gonna be, at this point, I'm looking at a twenty-seven thousand dollar increase over last year village-wide. We can't pay, we're, 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 we're not even making up for what we lost over the last several years. When inflation was above five percent. Um, our property taxes are about thirty-eight percent of our budget. So it is a huge portion, but they, they can't fund everything. And we don't have a business sector to bring the, the money to do it.
And if I'm not mistaken, the state's already reduced what we were, what we used to get back from the statewide before five percent.
Right.
Yep. So we're looking at some very lean times ahead.
I know. I don't wanna see my text, my taxes go up either, but I'd rather be safe than sorry.
At this point, we're. Well, I, I, I think it's generally basically like a forty-dollar increase for our portion of the tax bill.
All right, anything else for police and safety?
No, I'm glad to get the conversation started. So we, we gotta look at it.
Thank you.
Um, buildings and environment trustee Schatzberger is not here. As I mentioned, we will be starting up in early October with a. Coordinated effort with Dundee Township Open Spaces, working on clearing some invasives from Sleepy Hollow Road. Be great to have everybody come out and help, just learn what Buck Thorne and, like, can I think of it? Honey, so, thank you, what they look like. Um, and we'll go from there.
Just to have it on the record, um, even though Rhonda's not here.
Yes.
I'm sure she'll watch the video. Um, Kyle and I have had a discussion and it really kind of falls to environment. There's a village property along Willow, behind the homes on Willow.
Yes.
And, um, there are trees that have fallen down. And, uh, the neighbors have done a nice job of taking care of their property. And they've been kind of gone into the village property to cut one and make it look great. But now trees have fallen down and they're asking that we take care of those trees and get those removed. Because I don't believe there's anything in ordinance that speaks to who's responsible for that. If the, if the grass hadn't been cut and the nature had just taken over. Probably wouldn't even recognize that those trees have fallen. And now we would assume risk and a lot of labor to get these trees out. So I think an ordinance needs to be, uh, put together so that we could clearly state. What, what responsibility and whose responsibility for those, those kind of issues on village property?
Okay, I will mention that with trustee Schatzberger and we'll start working on, cause I know there's gonna be two different perspectives on that. Uh, fallen and dead trees in natural areas shouldn't necessarily be removed and then. Homeowners who live close to may want them removed. So there will be some debate, but we'll, I don't think it's just a straightforward ordinance.
You just wanna make sure that it's.
I got it.
Good dressed.
Thank you. Um. And trustee, why did I forget your name, Thomas? Building and zoning place.
That's okay. Um, I really don't have any report today. I will probably have one next time we're. The public, after the hearing, hearing and purchase review. Uh, we have nothing under old business.
I'm sorry, yes, Mrs. Tettner. Um, I just wanted to explain to the board that, um, on the fourth, I'd said that I would have some sort of pricing for electronic. Um, building permitting, we had inspections and everything, but President Bo asked me to stand down on that because of potential IGA. Um, so I followed her request. Um. A comment on, uh, during a public comment about the RFP is specifically after I submitted a sixty-day notice. That motion was tabled and no longer for discussion. And then lastly, I just wish to address a specific public comment made at the August fourth meeting. Specifically, I was at a twenty-one locust. Mr. Vernon had talked with me at length at the November seventh, twenty-twenty-four Northwest Bopac Training Session in Schaumburg where we were attending. When he explained the situation, I told him if it was just a few shingles, he would not need a permit. However, it was more sense of than he would, sense of the man he would need a permit. And as a professional that's well-versed in the code, he agreed with that. He advised the group, uh, work was going to be done in the near future and he would let me know. And he called me on Veterans Day, which is a federal holiday, and which we observed on November eleventh, evening twenty-four, nine fifty-three AM, and I returned his call. Um, he gave me the day the crew was going to be there and I knew already that I was going to be in town. And I said, as soon as he knew what was going on, that come down to Village Hall and get a permit application completed. And to let me know so that I can get over and issue the permit and get the inspections done for him. And he did not apply for his permit until the twenty-sixth of November and he paid for it on December ninth. I just wanted to let everybody know, um, I did return his call and he had talked to me at length at the BOP training session. So, thank you. Thank you very much, Jeff.
There's no, there is no old business at this time, so we'll be moving on to new business. Uh, first item of new business is discussion and motion to approve the fall twenty-twenty-five Sleepy Hollow Newsletter, the Legend. Do I have motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Moved by McGuire, seconded by DiAtlee. Any comments, questions, discussion or edits for the editors? I sent in, if you guys are listening, I sent in an email, uh, just with a couple edits and. Uh, we do not have a number for trustee Schatzberger yet, but I followed up with Eugene and we're calling West Dundee to get that squared away. Um.
Oh, yes, I will have. It's a little, I haven't added into it, but I did not get into them, so I'll get them to them.
Okay. Um. Uh, all those in favor of approval of the fall twenty-twenty-five Sleepy Hollow Newsletter, the Legend, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No, no opposition, all in favor, motion passes. Thank you. Uh, next item for just new business is discussion and motion to approve. A resolution approving a license agreement with Metro FiberNet LLC for installation, operation. And maintenance of fiber optic cable in the village. Do I have a motion?
So moved, DiAtlee?
Second, Thomas.
Moved by DiAtlee, seconded by trustee Thomas. Do you have any comments, questions or discussion? Or actually, Mark, would you like to address this with us?
I, I would just ask the same question if there's any questions. This is a, uh, obviously a fiber optic company. They are active in this area. They are working in West Dundee and Carpenter'sville right now. Uh, they wish to extend their cable through Sleepy Hollow. They, uh, they have done work for about twenty other Illinois communities. Uh, so they're expanding, uh, their business. Um, this license agreement, uh, just confirms that they'll follow the engineering construction standards. Working in public rights away. They will post the appropriate bond. Check that out in the agreement and, uh, to whatever extent their business may touch on telecommunications. Uh, they're aware of the existing telecommunications tax. They are largely internet providers and by federal law, there's no tax on internet, so. I, I don't expect this to lean to, uh, great revenues, but, uh, I mean, it's, uh, it's hard to build here.
One question I had going through the packet is there, so I know we have AT&amp;T and I think it's Xfinity in the area. So we got a third ones coming in with a completely different service, right?
Yeah, this is fiber optic as opposed to key, which is.
I think AT&amp;T is fiber optic in the area, so I believe I could be wrong.
It is a competitor.
Yeah, okay. So, uh, is there a way? I don't even know what I'm trying to ask. Pricing wise, where they keep pricing, we let them come into our community. We're not making much money off of them. They keep the pricing down for our residents or a way to put that, bring that in there?
Uh, it, uh, it was not negotiated in disagreement. I don't know what their pricing's, that, that just wasn't part of our discussion. I don't know.
Yeah, I feel like more people coming in, it should be part of, you know, or some sort of discussion. Maybe they're a certain percent lower than the others. I don't know.
If they have any chance of gaining any market share in this village, they're gonna have cheaper. But how long does that last for?
Right.
Well, you still have options.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
And whoever delivers the best service for the best price is gonna win. So.
Mark, do we know when they would begin this?
Uh, tomorrow morning.
Yes, all they've said is as soon as possible. They, they had hoped that this agreement could have been concluded at their last meeting. Um, and, uh, part of that is driven by the fact that they have. Uh, construction teams right here, right now, so they, they don't, they hope to avoid a lapse and be able to send them, you know.
Right.
Across the street and keep working in this neighborhood. So, uh, uh. I, I don't know if they're all finished or how close they are to being finished. Uh, other than to say they've represented that they're nearly done.
Okay. When would they be done in our village?
Jeff, did we get any deal for how long they would be working in the village?
So they said that they can do about a thousand feet, uh, every day. So it really depends on, I don't know what the full length, total length is. But you think it's probably maybe, uh, ten houses lengthwise-ish. So, I mean, calculate that into, it's mostly, at least from the permits middle that they've done. Is it's mostly in the right of way and also the eastwards, there's utility eastwards in backyards, so.
So other than knowing their schedule, so we can make sure people are aware of, I don't have any issue.
So they. Yes, we could certainly ask for that.
We have a pretty extensive communications team, uh, who I'm in contact with them and then. Uh, before they come out and start working, they'll have the yard signs out.
Okay.
Um, then there's a sign that they put at the end of the street for where they are gonna start working. And then there's little signs, like, kind of, uh, when you get your yard sprayed with chemical fertilizer. Little yard signs. There'll also be postcards that go out and they're all like. Four, two and four and two week increments and then a couple of days just before they're coming out. Um, so there'll be plenty of notice to the residents, signs up around the village. And we just needed to get the contract clear, the agreement cleared and then, uh, engineer. Jeff. Steel, uh, he will be doing group, uh, permits for various areas so they can get. A couple, like quite a few at a time in certain areas so that they can then proceed without having to come back every two weeks for.
As long as public works, that was where those cables are. That's.
And back in May, we discussed some of the difficult areas. So they've had a couple of months now to kind of get a good feel for what's going on around here. Checked in with West Dundee, East Dundee about their experiences. But they've had a few snags, which is to be expected with construction, but they said their responsiveness was really good. Got in there, covered it. And their twenty-four to forty-eight hours of restoration at each residence. Has held, held, held consistent the entire time in the Dundees.
Okay. I'd like to add too, because we've had people question. So when they come in, just like any underground utility locate. It'll be Public Works marking the water and sewer and then USIC. Will be marking all the other stuff, Nycor, Comcast, AT&amp;T. They wear a yellow vest. It says USIC on it and they have a car that says USIC on it. So if you. If we've had residents call not knowing who's in their yard. If there's somebody that doesn't have a USIC vest or it's Public Works. Probably call the police department because there's been some suspicious people. We've had some people call and ask if it was us and it wasn't, and it wasn't USIC, cause I get all the Julie. Notifications. So when someone called and said this person was in my backyard. On Bull Runway at this date, I can look and see if my tickets and if they, I don't have a ticket and it doesn't say USIC on it.
So they're, they're in yellow vest?
They have a yellow vest, yeah. And then there, it's a white pickup truck, um.
It's usually a white.
It's usually a four-brainer. Yes, it says USC on the door. They'll have their amber lights flashing.
Okay.
So that's just a heads up for people.
Thank you. They usually have Texas plates on them too.
Um, and speaking of that, just from our prior meeting. Dog fences, do we need to warn our residents to mark their invisible fences? I know we discussed.
Uh, yes, if you have a dog fence and you notice somebody is putting flags in your yard. If you don't want your fence cut, please mark your fence. Just take the dog collar off the dog, go out. Put it over the perimeter, use white flags. If they do get hit, I can't guarantee what Metronet's gonna do. You can splice it together, but it's a splice, so it's not as good as the original install. And I don't know if they will replace that because they're not really liable for hitting an unmarked line.
Thank you. Uh, so any further comments, questions or discussion on the motion on the table? Yes.
If West Dundee completed it and are they selling their service to the residents yet?
I do not know.
Not yet. I, I live there.
Okay.
They still haven't gotten to my street, so. I have the Julie locates have been sent there for a month, but see, I'll let you know when they do.
You didn't get any paraphernalia from about services coming to town or?
I got a notification that they're gonna be in town, but nothing up to date for at least my, my entire block.
I can just a lot, uh, to that. I just wanna state for the record that. Maybe you and Kyle have been privy to, but the trustees are here voting on it and I don't have enough information.
Okay.
To vote on, but, and I don't wanna hold it up. I, but I just would like to ask for more information to be coming our way on something of that magnitude.
Can you give me more about what you'd like? This was, so this was voted on by the prior board. Um, I, we inherited it. We met with the Metronet on, I think, the first week after taking office and that's when we did the pre-construction meeting. And then we finally got their legal team and ours together two weeks ago. Uh, to hash out the contract, which we use West Dundees and East Dundees as models and examples. They had home rule, we're non-home rule, but we're still put in the telecommunications tax. Um.
Right, I mean, it basically, they, they have the right, the same right as other companies to use the public rights away. The, the questions, the other question seemed to be about what's their business and what's their business model and things like that.
Well, what you said that we can't collect any sales tax on, correct, is that? That's, I mean, in one breath, you said we had a tax issue with it, but then you stated earlier, we can't collect any tax on it, so.
Only if, only if it's used for telecommunications, but they, they tell me. Metronet tells me that that's, that's not the focus of their business for sure and, uh, they, they, you know, they. They sell internet service, but that's not taxable. That's a federal law.
But they're worried about getting a franchise fee?
No, no. They're not a cable television, they're fiber optic.
Well, I mean, I certainly believe in the fact that we need to have competition against Comcast and AT&amp;T because they've been raising those internet fees. Uh, uh, every year it seems to us, so.
And Jenny, you raised eight, I'm sorry, trustee McGuire, you raised AT&amp;T. Are there fiber optics in Sleepy Hollow? My understanding is that none of, oh, there have been now?
Well, we've got, uh, this building, I believe, is fiber optic.
Residents, do residents have any?
I don't know about the residents.
I just, I, I called the other day, maybe because I'm close to here, but I called to play AT&amp;T against Xfinity last. I just, I I called the other day, maybe because I'm close to here, but I called to play AT and T against Xfinity last week. They said I'm eligible for the fiber optics here.
Oh, good, okay. I know, we were talking a couple of years ago, yeah. And that was actually part of MetroNet's uh pitch last year was they go to smaller areas where, cuz a lot of times you see it more in metropolitan areas where it's more concentrated. It's easier with density to install and so they focused on smaller areas, so. All right, um. Any further discussion? Uh roll call vote, please. Uh Trusty McGuire?
I.
Trustee Thomas?
Hi.
Trustee Diatley?
Hi.
Trustee Connelly?
Hi.
Trustee Hoff?
Hi.
No, no opposition, all affirmative, motion passes, thank you. All right, now we move on to the next one. This was started sort of previously, at previous meetings with the chief with respect to the collection agents or the collections. So this is a discussion and motion to approve a resolution approving an agreement with MCOA for collection of unpaid fines and other amounts due to the village. Do I have a motion?
So moved Diatley?
Second, uh moved by Diatley, seconded by Connelly. Comments, questions, discussion? All right, um have a roll call vote, please. Trustee Hoff?
Hi.
Trustee Thomas?
Hi.
Trusty McGuire?
I.
Trusty Connelly?
Hi.
Trustee Diatley?
Hi.
All affirmative, no opposed, motion passes. Um may I have a motion? To most, discussion and motion to approve an ordinance amending the village code to add a new provision regarding defaults and payment and collection of fines and penalties due to the village. I have a motion.
So who?
Second, moved by Connelly, seconded by Thomas. Any comments, questions, discussion?
One, this backs up the agreement, so uh you have general penalty provisions already in the code, this uh establishes that there would be an increase. Uh and from that increase, then uh some of that goes to the collection agency, what they collect and they must go to the village. So it's just uh, it's in the agreement that you uh would provide for that type of markup. Uh this ordinance and just puts it on the book.
Where where's the increase?
If if you were to receive an administrative adjudication citation and either contested it, lost or failed to appear, there's gonna be a fine imposed. If you fail to pay that fine, it's going to increase by thirty-five percent.
Okay.
Then it's gonna be sent for collections.
Okay, got it. I understand.
That's what you say.
Any further comments, questions or discussion? Hearing none, uh roll call vote, please. Trustee Diatley?
Hi.
Trusty McGuire?
I.
Trustee Hoff?
Hi.
Trustee Thomas?
Hi.
Trustee Connelly?
Hi.
All in favor, no opposed, motion passes. Uh item E was a leftover from a prior agenda, but except we do not have an ordinance amending water and sewer, sorry about that oversight on my part, guys. Uh item F, discussion and motion to approve purchase of one solar powered portable speed camera from Traffic Logic for three thousand eight hundred thirty-four dollars plus a hundred and ten dollars for the mounting pole and hardware. This expense will be paid through the road fund. Do I have a motion?
Can I ask what this would?
Can we do a motion for discussion?
So move the.
Second.
Moved by Diatley, seconded by McGuire. Comments, questions or discussion?
Isn't central of it?
Yeah.
It's the same exact one that's on Sleepy Hollow Road.
So do we get to put this one wherever we want?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we going to move around?
Yes, we will be moving it per Chief Parma's request of wherever his. It collects data too, just like his data reader and that one actually does too, so all three can communicate with each other.
And we have access to the data on that one or no?
No, not currently.
And she won't get that.
But yes, this one we will be moving throughout the village where.
Should we just get rid of the one if we don't even use it properly? It's not ours.
It's not ours. It's not ours. Uh Trustee Connelly, I think this, not I think, this was a motion that was uh initiated by you, would you like to speak to the meeting that you had where this came up and?
Sure, so earlier, one of our viewers, we talked about my concern about speed and and uh the fact that the roads are as narrow as they are and I'm just concerned about somebody getting hurt or uh the problems that we have with speeding. And so I met with Kyle, the chief. Unfortunately, I failed to ask Steve Diatley because I was new to this and uh but I have updated him since and uh also with uh Eugene Van. We talked about it, the input from the chief talked about, he also has a similar concern. And uh we felt that we needed to do something for the residents. And so this was the idea of finding something that can be portable, can be moved around, collect data and um that's how this, that's how this has come about.
Did did we not, and this is way back. When I, I thought there was one that the village had. Because I remember it sitting at the end of my street. Yeah, that.
Problem with that is also discussed, but you know, the roads are narrow and to put a trailer out makes it even more of a safety issue, so.
Okay.
People used to flip it over.
Built again. Did we have any uh conclusive data that the one down by the bridge on Sleepy Hollow Road has produced of speed?
No.
It's also in a.
It's in the worst spot on that, that part of the room.
Oh, it's in a very inefficient spot for monitoring that.
And we have no control over that.
That is not ours to change or.
I thought she donated it.
Village, but we can get it off village property, no? Why?
It's not ours to move.
The property is ours to.
The the sign is not ours to move, it does not belong to the village.
So I can buy a sign and put it on village property in front of my yard next to the park.
We, right now, what's our discussion is the solar powered speed camera that we're looking to purchase, we cannot move the one that's on Sleepy Hollow Road. Um. What part of this is ridiculous?
The fact that uh your, our hands as the government are tied from moving and not getting the data from it.
We don't get the data because we're not paying for the data because it's not useful to us, for example. So it was, it was a choice that we made not to pay for the access to the data. Because we knew that it, you know, it needs to be moved to a location where it makes sense. And if we can't move it, the data is useless, that would make sense.
Do we pay a monthly fee for that data on this new one?
On on new one, I don't know if it's a monthly, but there is a, an agreement that we do get the data and um you know, it's it's we get saved text message, I guess, whenever someone was over fifty miles an hour on the, you know, on that, but he gets regular updates on on new conditions.
I'm pretty sure there's a service fee yearly and I think it's like two hundred and fifty bucks a year. For as many as you have, so you don't stop per radar sign, so if we wanted to like eventually down the road, get two more, it's one fee per hall.
Uh I'd like to add a comment, kind of what Trustee Hoff was saying earlier with respect to the Metro FiberNet contract, um. I like the idea of potentially purchasing another portable speed camera with more access to the data and even potentially the next item of another speed hump. I think this probably warrants a little further discussion and debate, like I'd like to know why we chose the one from Traffic Logic. Um what is the efficacy of having uh solar powered speed cameras like as opposed to other ones that say slow down as opposed to like what are the different types of signs we could have and what's the data on those? Um I know that everybody around the village, all, we all have our opinions. And so everybody thinks that one thing's gonna work better than the other and feel that I'd be more comfortable if we could have information on all of those options so that when the residents come to us and say, well, why didn't you get this? I know that this works in my uncle's subdivision, we can say this is why it's more applicable here with respect to us. I don't think that, I think the in states here were good with this, but I'd like to see a little bit more and maybe a little more variety to choose from or more information.
I would agree with that, like we need, yeah, a little more info.
So other ideas that were discussed were other ways to calm traffic.
Okay.
Okay, which suck, paint chevrons in the street. And the the chief's input was after a period of time, that kind of loses its its effectiveness. Uh other things could be bump outs, we don't really have uh the curbs available to build bump outs to try to slow people down. The idea behind this was the portability of it and the fact that it's in different places at different times flashing your speed and we think that that would be uh more effective than some of the other um called traffic calming uh methods.
Is it the same size as the one on Sleepy, on Sleepy Hollow Road or is it bigger, like we've seen those bigger ones and?
It's the same size uh because it's twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, so just like any highway signs, twenty-five mile an hour sign, if you look at a forty-five mile an hour speed limit sign, it's bigger because you're going faster. Um it's the same logic with this. The reason it would be the Traffic Logic brand is because we have potentially one that will become ours one day is a Traffic Logic and then the chief's data collector is a Traffic Logic, so we keep it the same brand to
you.
Yeah, intertwined themselves.
You do know?
That's, thank you. Um.
We can change the color of the sign. Right now, the one there is white, you can do a yellow and black. Um and then they can also put messages in the, in the radars, you know, where it flashes the.
Slow down.
Yeah, you put messages in it.
That that's just what I was thinking is, is there something a little bit bigger cuz that's kind of small.
Right, slow down in there might be a little cramped.
Yeah.
I can always attach, I can always attach another sign below the radar sign itself too. Um you know, like when you go up by the school, they have the neon.
Right.
We can do a a warrant or a yellow background with black letters. Whatever message you wanna have, it'd be permanent. Well, the
Permanent.
The the numbers and letters won't change, um but you could always add it, attach a sign to that. A rule or warning or.
Further comments, questions?
Is it proper tonight for something else?
Not, I let it happen at a meeting before, but I really can't. But I said, thank you.
Sure.
Sure. Um. When you say I can't, no, it's against the laws, thank you. So all right, any further comments, questions or discussions from the board? Hearing none, roll call vote, please. Uh just.
Are you tabling this because somebody said something about?
There's no option.
No question, okay, no.
I think Kyle's, I think Kyle explained it enough to understand. For me at least.
So we have a motion on that.
Yep.
Uh we have motion by Steve Diatley, uh seconded by uh Trusty McGuire to purchase, approve purchase of one solar powered portable speed camera from Traffic Logic, which is the same brand as our other equipment for three thousand eight hundred thirty-four dollars plus one hundred and ten dollars for the mounting pole and hardware. And this expense would pay through the road fund. Roll call vote, please. Trustee Connelly?
Hi.
Trustee Thomas?
Hi.
Trustee Hoff?
Hi.
Trustee Diatley?
Hi.
Trustee McGuire?
Hi.
All in favor, no opposed, motion passes. A couple more votes. All right, uh item G, discussion and motion to approve purchase of a portable speed hump for one thousand ninety-eight dollars plus three hundred and sixty dollars for anchors. This hump is similar to the one currently owned by the village and this expense will be paid through the road fund. Do I have a motion?
So who?
I can. Moved by Connelly, seconded by McGuire. Any comments, questions, discussion? Trustee Thomas?
Where?
Where's it going?
Is it, is this gonna go?
In front of your house.
Thank you so very much.
In your driveway.
Something else for me to follow. Um will it go on the other side of the village? Since this one is on the east side, will it go on the? Other side, is there any?
Uh I I don't wanna speak for Chief Parma.
You usually don't like to dig, well, I'll say no.
He he strongly considering one on Sleepy Hollow Road. Uh also Joy. Right at the bottom of the hill before.
And and that's what I was asking, cuz I know there's a lot of people on Joy that have you know, stated about the or made comments about the um speed on Joy and and I get it because I've seen it on local studies, you know, so I just want the residents on that side of the village to be taken care of as well. Uh just for Trustee Connelly and Kyle, if you guys wanna put a little note in, um the the curve of Hilltop going from Joy to Bo Brummel where they tend to cut through is usually where they can pick up speed and might be a good spot for that speed hump, I'll tell the chief as well.
He's against it. He's against it on curves. Because it can create a hazard.
That's true, there's that, okay, fair. Um all right, any other comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please. Trustee Hoff?
Hi.
Trustee Thomas?
Hi.
Trustee Diatley?
Hi.
Trusty McGuire?
I.
Trustee Connelly?
Hi.
All, all in favor, no opposed, motion passes. Uh onto the last, second to last item, uh H, discussion and motion to approve purchase of border timbers and ADA mulch for one thousand seven hundred thirty dollars with the Dundee Township Park District, it's not listed here, but this is to surround the Sabatino Park Playground. Uh the expenses will be paid from the Parks General Fund. Do I have a motion?
So who? Second.
Moved by Connelly, seconded by Diatley. Any comments, questions, discussion?
The wording on this was, so is it our parks fund or the park district's funds?
So Park District and the village have an intergovernmental agreement with respect to the playground. They help us maintain and they're offering to split, is that my understanding?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're splitting the costs, they would be twice that if we were to do it ourselves.
Just Sabatino.
Yes.
Yeah.
Are we getting rid of all the old mulch or just putting this?
Adding to it, adding to it.
Is it rubberized or?
It's gonna be ADA approved, just what's there now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions, discussion?
Uh they will also take out the tunnel slide on the tight playground for free. Because the one of the posts settled and it's pulling the slide, so the slide's starting to crack.
Do we have a closed? There?
They have a panel.
They will put a panel in.
They got, no, I'm anybody trying to go down slides.
Yeah.
There. All right, um any other discussion? Hearing none, uh roll call vote, please. Trustee Hoff?
Hi.
Trusty McGuire?
I.
Trustee Thomas?
I.
Trustee Diatley?
Hi.
Trustee Connelly?
Hi.
All in favor, no opposed, motion passes. And our last item of the night is a discussion and motion to approve an indemnification agreement. Do I have a motion? Moved by Connelly, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Diatley. Uh with respect to this indemnification agreement, I did not want to put the address on, straight up on the agenda just to not draw more attention to this residence. Uh this is the location up on Jamestown, right off of Deer Creek and kind of on Joy. Where a resident stopped to pick up their child from school in parking on the side of the street, noticed that there was a sprinkler system on the village property area along the gravel that lines the road. Um my understanding of it is that there are some, just some words between the two residents, the homeowner as well as the person who was parking. And they have, everybody has since asked, what are the parking ordinances, what are they allowed to park? And why were there sprinkler systems on village property? Upon investigating, the homeowners have been there for twenty-nine years, they moved into an a blank lot just with the house on it and when they had the landscapers there, they were putting in the the grass, the trees, all of it. And because of the swale and the location, they made a recommendation that they place the sprinkler system up along the streets that just was going towards the yard. At that time, sort of been back in nineteen ninety-six, they went to that board, we do not have paper trail of this at the moment. Uh we're still looking. Uh they may have given them approval to help this construction and then it came to the board's attention five years later, in which they asked them to remove it, but it was only a single sheet of paper, there was no follow-up, there are no comments in the minutes, nothing, and it is basically existed like this for twenty-nine years with no damage or harm to anybody. Um so we have just asked, what we'd like to do is just to hold harmless, it hasn't been an issue for almost thirty years. If the only damage it could be would be breaking some of the sprinkler heads, when that happens, they have always just replaced them. This would make it formal so that it's just acknowledged that we know it's there, it hasn't caused harm and it won't cause harm to the village moving forward. Uh please, if you have any. Please, if you have any comments, questions, or discussion, I've been handling this separately with the residents and uh. Eugene and Mark. Because I wanted to be able to keep the, some of the residents are not very public. So I was trying to keep them out of the limelight, spotlight of Facebook and social media. Any questions from anybody?
I agree with it, whole harmless because. It's been there for what, almost thirty years? Really? We're gonna go after them now? No. I, I, you know, and they eat their home up, they keep their yard, like, I, I just, no.
Anything else? Hearing no more discussion, um. Just go with the roll call then.
Trustee Thomas?
I.
Trustee McGuire?
I.
Trustee Hoff?
I.
Trustee Connolly? Trustee Diatley?
I.
All, all in favor, no opposed, motion passes, that is the end of new business.
Motion.
Yes, trustee.
Sorry, I have an update, I will not be able to attend at one second.
The twenty seconds?
Right.
Um.
I will not be here.
All right, we should still have a physical forum, we will have September twenty-second, there's a special business meeting at seven thirty. We will try to fit it in on the fifteenth, so we don't need to meet, I will let you know as of the fifteenth, we can do that. Uh, hearing no other discussion or business, motion. Uh, do a second? All's in favor? All's opposed? Meeting ends adjourned, thank you.